To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Walter Ms. O'Malley, former custodian at the major law school, and Linda McLaughlin, a former teacher at Clinton Elementary School. Thank you. I'd like to open the Clinton School Committee meeting for Monday, May 1st, 2023. Can I have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any none, all in favor? Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from April 10th, 2023?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Any discussion? None, all in favor? Thank you. Any public comment? Didn't miss it today. None? Better student rep?
Oh, moving right along.
And then from the CTA. Oh.
Come on up, Rob.
It's short tonight.
Yeah, I got nowhere to go anyway.
Sorry, buddy. Self-explanatory.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, yeah, okay, we'll go to that. We'll do that. I ain't gonna jump on a bear wagon.
Anyway, we would like, CTA would like to recognize all administrators on Administrator Appreciation Day, so thank you for what you do. And we have nothing big other than the town sent us out the new health insurance rates, and I'm sure I'm gonna hear a lot of grumbling. I know you have nothing to do with it, and I know that the town has to cover a larger percentage than what we pay, but, you know, people are reacting to 13.75%. It's tough to swallow on top of fuel and health insurance, or, you know, food and all the other stuff, but I guess it just gets lumped into the category of everything's going up exponentially. So, MCAS is happening this week.
Good luck.
Thank you. But I think we're ready. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I do know, I mean, obviously, as Robin alluded to, that the health insurance rates from the town came out, there were, there were significant increase. Part of that is, we are part of the Nishoba Miniman Healthcare, whatever it's called, the little regional group, and those rates are quoted also based on your, basically your, your usage profile, too. So if you have a lot of claims, they adjust your rates that way. So that's part of it, too, which is always terrible, because it's like, well, if you have insurance, you're sick, you should use your insurance, but the more you use it, the more it goes up. Yeah, so.
And for the PTA.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Kelly.
So I don't have much for PTA or CPAC, so I'm just gonna lump them together. We have meetings tomorrow for CPAC and Wednesday for PTA. It'll officially be my last meeting on the board for PTA on Wednesday night. Both meetings will have a, I'm sorry, will be, will take nominations for the board for both CPAC and PTA, and I'd like to thank you all for everything over the years for PTA, but you'll still be seeing me for CPAC. And good luck to everyone for the rest of the year.
We should be thanking you.
Exactly.
Appreciate all you've done for all our kids and our families.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I still have a couple more years here with kids in the district, so you're still gonna see me around, but.
You could try to get out. We'll try you back in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
All right. Dr. Meyer.
All right, so as a follow-up, we did make the recommendation last meeting about potentially not participating in school choice next year. If you're gonna make that decision, you do have to have a public hearing. This was posted as our public hearing. It doesn't need to be, the law is clear, it does not need to be a separate standalone meeting, it's just an option to hear people. I did include a copy of our current policy in here, but that does talk about, it just talks about sort of our process for it. But the law, the legal reference in there is what explains the, how you can opt out if you choose not to participate. I did ask the sibling question to Sharon Siegel. She said that sibling preference only applies if you're participating in school choice. If you opt out, then you can't, you can't just say, we're gonna, we're gonna allow siblings in. If you opt out of school choice, the school committee could enter into individual agreements with the siblings sending districts, also governed under MGL Chapter 76, Section 12. It would not be from the states like school choice funds, it would have to come directly from the other district, and the other district would have to agree. We'd have to work something out. But there is, so there is a, there is a mechanism to provide that we could say, like, hey, Fitchburg, this kid would come here to school choice, you guys would lose the X amount in school choice anyway, can you just pay it to us directly? That's essentially what it would be. And she said the other option could be, if we were worried, just if we're really worried about siblings, is we could, I could do like, I could send out something that's sort of like just an email to everybody with a little link that says, sort of, do you have siblings that you intend to school choice in next year? And then if we wanted to, then we could technically participate, but we would just set the caps based on, you know, we'd say like, okay, if there's three kindergarten kids that have siblings in the, you know, in the district, we could say, okay, we're opening three school choice slots. And then by sibling preference, as long as they got their paperwork in time, they would be the ones that would get those three slots. So I guess that's, that's, that's probably the cleanest, I almost think, is if we send it out and if people know. It really should only impact primarily kindergarten. I mean, I can't imagine, you know, most siblings, if they were coming here, they should already be here.
Sure.
And then, then we go from there. So I don't know if there's, if there was any public comment on this, or what the board is thinking, so.
So, so we really have two choices then, right? To just close it and then wait to hear, and you could do it case by case? Would that?
Right, so if we close it, then everything becomes case by case. So if someone tries to get in and they're like a sibling, we could try to say, okay, we're gonna try to negotiate directly with the town to get the sibling in. If, or we could try to do some sort of survey, sort of proactively to see, you know, of the, of those, actually, I'm just thinking about it right now, but we should, we're doing kindergarten registration right now. I mean, I could look and just see if there's any, did we look and see if there's any, I'm sure we haven't, but we could look through the kindergarten registration and just see if there are any, and, because really kindergarten's the only, the only one.
So do we wanna maybe think about, maybe pointing this to the next meeting? Give you an opportunity to maybe take a look at that?
Yeah.
Or do you want us to rule on something tonight?
No, we don't have to sit here and rule on it tonight. I need it by June 1st.
Okay.
We submit it to the state by June 1st, so we have another meeting.
Okay.
So let me look at, I think that's what I'll do. Why don't I look at the kindergarten registration that we already have? I'll see if there's anyone that falls into that. I could do an email out to parents, too, just to see, then we know kind of what that sibling question looks like, and then when we come back next meeting, we can make a decision. Because we could say, you know, yeah, we're gonna participate in school choice only for kindergarten and only for four slots, but all our other grades are closed. I mean, because when you participate, you cap it, you know?
Sure. I think just whatever we can do to avoid creating an inconvenience for those families would be preferable. I know we don't have to do it, but I think it'd be at least interesting to see, see the information, and if we can avoid it for those families, it'd be.
All right, so I'll try, I'll try to send out an email survey, and we've got, we've got, actually, I think because of the way things have sort of fell, I think we actually have three weeks till the next meeting, it's the 22nd. So I should have time to look at the kindergarten registration and do a survey, and then, but the 22nd, we're gonna need to take a vote on something, because I need to fill out the thing.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
It's the May 22nd, maybe? Yep, so that's when we'll have to do it on. As far as staffing updates, we did have one additional retirement. Carol Lee Flanagan, a CES Special Needs IA of 16 years, has indicated she's going to be retiring at the end of this school year. So we wish her well. I think that brings our total retirees at the end of the year to three.
One.
We had one mid-year, right?
No.
Yes, we had one mid-year that, Kelly Benas retired, and then we have three additional ones at the end of the school year, so not, not, not a ton for retirees. End-of-year goals update and vision and all this kind of stuff, so I tried to look through, and, you know, the mission statement, the, the vision, the vision statement, all these things. I tried to make some, some minor revisions to them that are in red. Obviously, this, I'm not proposing to accept these or not, but these are things that, as we talk about redoing, like the strategic plan, this is some of the stuff that we would wanna start. And like I said, I do think that equity and diversity and inclusion were things that, last time we did it, I think we tried to hint at it, but I think where, where we are, I think, you know, in education today, we needed to be more explicit about it in, in what we're stating. So I tried to build in some of those. You can see the changes in the revision statement and the draft vision statement. And for core values, the same thing, instead of global community, which I think is sort of how we were kind of embedding it, I tried to change it more to a core value on equity and inclusion, to make sure that we are, you know, making sure that people have students to be equitable opportunities to be productive members of a global society. So I think that those are, like I said, we don't need to approve those yet, but I just, those are things that we're working on. Probably do some more work with it with our admin team, like over the summer at some point. I don't know if it'll be as extensive as it was last time when we were kind of writing a brand-new one, but we'll probably, I'm thinking in the fall, we'll probably have to get together some sort of team like we did with the last strategic plan to at least review things and come up with some new targets and that kind of stuff. As far as our goals, you know, I think that, you know, if you look at phone calls and outreach, I think we've been trying to do, do a lot more with that in terms of when we're looking at attendance and those types of things, social, emotional well-being. For our celebrations, we've recognized so far at school committee, we've recognized 71 students so far this year, we've recognized 28 staff members. I put that one in green, because that's a lot more than we typically had done. Normally, we might do a staff member every month, if, for every month we did it, so we're probably doing maybe 10, because a lot of times we might not do it even during the summer. This year, we did 28 so far, so, and we still have another, another round in May. Looking at student attendance, this is the percentage of students who are chronically absent, meaning they miss 10% of their days, and you can see that the, I gave you a couple different numbers here. So June of 2019, I included that number because that was the pre-pandemic numbers, right? So before the pandemic, that's basically what our chronic absenteeism rate, you can see as a district, it was 16%, with each school being a little bit, having a little variation from that. If you go now to March 2023, very end, you can see that if our numbers hold, we would be significantly less than that at the elementary school and the middle school, a little bit lower at the high school, and overall, our chronic absenteeism would be down to 13%. So we are getting to that point now where we're getting sort of better than our pre-pandemic levels as far as the chronic absenteeism count goes. I included that you could see how bad it was last year in 2022, when we were still coming back. It was, it was like up at 30% was chronically absentee, absent, and a lot of that was still, we had the quarantining stuff, so someone tested and they'd be out five days, or 10 days, or whatever it was. So that was bumping a lot of numbers up. But one of the things I also included was you can see from March to June that change. If you look at March 22 to June 22, you can see that all, pretty much all the numbers improved, right? So when you look at our March number, what I'm hoping is that, you know, if a kid, if a kid had, because it's based on 10% of the days missed, right? So if a kid has a better fourth quarter than they had, like if they had one extended absence or something, that's making them chronically, they might get below 10% as we had more days. So what's, when I looked at it sort of historically, it looked like, actually, from the March to June, by the more days in attendance, we actually decreased our percentage by doing that. So I think that's, that's encouraging, but I think just the fact that we're in single digits right now at the elementary school and the middle school is amazing. When you look at, you know, last year, we were, at that time, we were talking about a third of our kids. Staff attendance, I tried to do something similar, where we kind of looked at tracking staff attendance. This is track, this is total days missed, and, you know, back in 1819, pre-pandemic, it was 15. 1920, it actually dipped down, but I think that's kind of a little bit artificial, because remember, we had so many, once we kind of went to being remote and that kind of stuff, there was probably a lot less of, you know, if you had a little cold or something, you could still turn your, turn your computer on and run your Zoom classes when they're doing that kind of stuff. So those numbers, I think, are a little bit of an anomaly. You can see last year, it was up to about 17 and a half days, where the average missed a year, and as of when I ran the data on the 29th of March, it was, we were at like 11, which if you extrapolate out, would give us to about 15.8 if it was the same. So we'll do, I'll redo this again once we finish the school year, just to look at the end-of-year numbers. But that's just sort of, you know, what you can see sort of happening with that, which I think is, you know, I put that as, kind of coded that as yellow. Like, you know, we're looking at it, I think it's not, it's not terrible, but it's, you know, it's not the improvement like we saw sort of a student attendance. You know, our lead measures for eliminating inequities among learners, we shared the equity audit with you, our civil rights self-evaluation was completed, our special ed program review, we shared those summaries with you in February. We didn't do a full EL program review, and we didn't, and we didn't do really anything to quantify like the access of tier-one curriculum. Some of our lag measures, I think are mostly in progress. We're, you know, obviously, some of the budget decisions we're making are trying, from that equity audit. We'll probably have some policies we're gonna be looking at pretty soon. Same thing with special ed, we'll get those reviews. Some of the things we're trying to do for programming for next year is incorporating that. And the student growth and achievement data, it's funny, because in our, a lot of our systems right now, for whether it's iReady at the elementary or middle school, or whether it's STAR at the high school, it's something with the way it's kind of syncing with Clever, I think that we're not quite getting the demographic information in there, so even though it looks like you should be able to sort by demographic, it kind of just keeps telling you everybody the same way. So we're working on trying to get those filters all in there so that we can do more detailed analysis of that, which we'll probably do with our end-of-the-year data over the summer as part of our admin retreat. And the district-wide instructional handbook, we have contracted to have a CES instructional handbook done. That was through the turnaround grant that they got this year, so the idea was this is the last, even though they came off the list, because the turnaround grants were out before the list came out, we were still eligible for it, and the idea was use it to do this instructional handbook, so we can kind of capture what they're doing now, so it's more of a sustainability plan moving forward. And then for the multi-tiered system of support, you know, the elementary school, middle school, high school, they, they all have an assessment calendar based around giving, you know, different types of assessments, whether it's iReady or STAR, those are the big ones for reading and math achievement and growth. And every school has a data team. CES has a data team that's separate from their just regular student support team, that they meet to really look at their tier-one data, help set up sort of their win blocks, look at progress monitoring data. The middle school and the high school sort of embed it into their student support team meetings as sort of a general topic, not just individual students in there. And win schedules, the elementary school is off and running with that. They got an hour win every day, they're doing tier-two and tier-three interventions, they also have IT, iReady or ST Math that students can be doing during that time. So I'd say that's probably the most, most developed win block. CMS has their win block every day, the last period. They do, they have some like math tutorials they've started, they do some reteaching, regrouping with students. They've also been kind of running their, some of their clubs, they've been trying to do during that time as well. So I think the CMS one's coming along as well, too. It's just, might, it might almost partly be, you know, it's like a different, a little bit different for how they deliver services with that. And then the high school, the high school has a win block from 12:50 to 1:15 every day, it's like the last 25 minutes of a long block. And right now, just because the way the high school schedule works, it's not, there's not a lot of pull-out interventions that go, it's more like, you know, when students can go see different teachers to either get extra help or, or get work done, that kind of stuff. So we're in various stages of progress. It's, the elementary school, I think, is, is pretty much there, the middle school is coming along, and the high school is, it's always the challenging, most challenging at the high school level. So then some of the academic data there. You can see iReady at the elementary school and middle school, if you look at the percentage of students at or above grade level from fall to winter, it increases in each one. It looks like I have a typo on that middle school reading one, I think that's backwards, but the, those all increased. And then when you look at the grades, three-plus grades or below, those ones all decreased, which is good. So we're, we're showing a positive shift in our data. And then same thing with our, our STAR testing, when you compare sort of our proficiency rates this winter compared to the previous year, they've all, they've all increased. Our growth, the ones that are in yellow are some of the growth that we'd like to see a little bit higher, but, you know, they, they tell you that your target growth for STAR testing for math should be 65%, when we were 64.9, right? So we'd like to see that a little higher, but it's pretty close. So overall, our internal measurements would show that our students are growing and that they're, and our students who are, who are below grade level aren't as far below grade level anymore. Then I just have some draft stuff about sort of when we think about a strategy for the next five years, and this is all draft, but it's talking about different things, and a lot of this version here, I mean, I put it right in here, I adapted it from Acton Boxborough's strategy that they presented during the joint conference. So this is just something to kind of get started, I was just trying to get thoughts on paper as we start looking at professional development for next year and those types of things. It's not refined, this isn't something that I'm proposing right now, it's more, like I said, it's a draft to just sort of get our thoughts going, but really focusing on, you know, it's engaged learning, inclusive practice, social, emotional learning, and equitable opportunities and outcomes. So you have sort of the equity in there, our engaged learning, which kind of brings, brings in a lot of the UDL and that type of stuff we've been trying to do, inclusive practice, UDL and co-teaching, which we've been working on, and social, emotional learning. So, so anyway, I tried to just sort of get those thoughts down there, and then some of the PD that we're looking at, so we're looking at with Commonwealth Consulting next year, we're planning on, we're trying to work with a preliminary contract for them, looking at some professional administrative support, we normally have a leadership, they help during our leadership retreat do some of this planning, also some coaching and mentoring, because we know we're gonna have a new, new principal. Professional Development Day on the 29th, they'll come in and do some of those, those kind of topics, their quick overview again of MTSS, probably talking a little bit about co-teaching, so that we can get more of a common district-wide definition of that, and, and then also spending some time going over the, the new IEP forums that they'll start to see throughout the year. And the, we talked about those guidebooks as the goal this year, that we're doing one at the elementary school, we're gonna try to incorporate the special ed and equity audit findings to get those guidebooks going for the whole district next year, and we still have the instructional coaching, which is basically gonna focus on co-teaching in, really, grades four to six is where we're gonna try to focus the most on building capacity. One to three will still get support with their existing structures, because they're doing it already, and that's, that's our plan for now. So that's sort of, I know there's a lot in there, but it's sort of like some of the stuff we've done this year and what we're thinking about for next year, so I don't know if anyone has any specific questions or concerns on that. It's all, all in the works. We'll update it with, you know, as internally, we'll definitely look at some of that data, and we'll update it once we have our end-of-the-year data, and then the, the plans for next year, we're continuing to, to adapt and evolve, and then that's all leading to us hopefully creating a new five-year strategic plan. Like I said, I think we'll probably try to kick that process off either in the, like the very beginning of the school year, I'd like to get that going, so. All right. Included in your packet is just a list of events coming up, and I know, I think Tina, you asked about the Step Up banquet, I don't, did we get an answer to that? Can we find out when the Step Up banquet is? Yeah.
I know.
Okay. So we'll try to, we'll try to find that and add that to you, just so you, I know that that is when they normally invite the school committee to and everything like that, I don't know. I don't know when, when that one is yet. But the ones on here that are in, that I bolded are usually, well, the Memorial Day show, we shouldn't have bolded, it should be the school committee meeting right above that on the 22nd, so. But the school committee meeting on the 22nd, Cal graduation commencement, town meeting, the school committee meeting after graduation on 13th, those, those are, just kind of remind you, those are the ones that you probably, someone needs to be there, if not all, if not the whole committee, sometimes you just have a representative or so that might go to some of them, but then some of the other things are going on. So we'll try to get the, oh, and actually, you already, did you already update that once and email out something? Yeah, so we'll, we'll keep that, we'll keep this current and try to make sure we get it to you guys.
Okay. Thank you.
CMS MSBA update, I don't have a big update right now, I know that what we're doing is, you know, the next, where we are in the process right now is they're still working on building out the three designs that we moved forward. The goal is to make sure that those get to cost estimators by the end of, the end of this month, so that there can be more sort of financial, more hard financial numbers put to these projects by the, you know, early June, and then the goal will be to share those publicly on, we think we have the meetings technically scheduled for the 14th, yeah. And, but they'll be probably shared, they had a public meeting, too, people won't do attend, but I think it'll be shared in advance, I think it's like on the 6th or something like that at the, at a building committee meeting when we post it. And we'll try to go from there. One of the things I know I, I was working on is, you know, the MSBA just had their, their meeting the other day approving some of the new projects, and, and you can see that there's, and they, they've been kind of warning us of this all along, but you can see the cost of construction just continues to, to sort of increase. So one of the things I was working on today, which we're gonna go over at our meeting tomorrow, we have a weekly sort of team check-in with OPM and the designer about making some changes to some of the areas of the building, particularly around special education, where I know Loretta and I met and went over a lot of things today, just to sort of say, you know, okay, we had this room, we, you know, we kind of penciled in a room a size of 450 square feet, but could we get away with 300 square feet? You know what I mean? And, and sort of, not, not really for the general ed classrooms, those, those are pretty much set, but those other little spaces, as far as the ones that are sort of like half an office, but you might have a couple kids in them, and those types of things, and really just trying to look at those numbers, just to try to see, you know, where we might be able to just sort of save some square footage, because it might not seem like a lot, but you do that over the course of five or 10 rooms, and now all of a sudden, you might have, you know, you might have saved 1,000 square feet. And, you know, if construction costs end up being close to $1,000 a square foot, which they may or may not, 1,000 square feet is a million bucks you just cut off the project, right? So trying to look at those things where not, not where they would necessarily, we're not trying to do anything now that would impact really anything that we've said we wanna do in our, in our ed program, but really looking at things and saying, you know, when we kind of pencil these in, and we're just sort of like, yeah, a small group room here and a small group room here, like, could, is there, not all small group rooms have to be really, you know, equal. So trying to do that, just trying to be conscious of those types of things. I put in here FY '24 budget update, I have not heard anything from the finance committee yet, I did talk to a couple finance committee members, and I think they're still trying to piece everything together. Last I talked to them, which was last week, so we'll, we'll see if I get, you know, we're running out of dates here, but hopefully if I have to, if I get any feedback, I'll have to make some change, we'll make some changes that we need to make, and hopefully May 22nd meeting, we're ready to have it, you know, blessed by this committee, so that we can move forward into the, to the town meeting, all on the same page. The thing I did include in here was the cherry sheets, you can see the House came out with their proposal, so that third column's filled in now, and there really wasn't any, if you look at the second one, where the receipts, Chapter 70, you can see the, the governor's proposal and the House Ways and Means were the exact same. And that's what I anticipated, I anticipated that the school districts that were benefiting from implementing the Student Opportunity Act were probably gonna stay the exact same, because I don't think they're gonna, I don't think they're gonna make any move to not gonna, I don't think they're going to make any move to not fund the SOA, but I don't think they're going to then give any people who are benefiting from the SOA more. A lot of the fight right now is for towns that don't necessarily benefit from the Student Opportunity Act based on their sort of demographics and, and economics. You know, those are towns that were originally slotted to get like $30 a kid, I think now they're up to $60 a kid. So that's, that's how they figure theirs. Besides that, you know, there was a little bit of a re, of reduction in charter tuition reimbursement, there was also a little bit of almost the same amount in charter sending tuition reduction. So not, not a whole lot has changed, but just figured I'd keep you guys, that's the only real budget update I've received. So we did meet with the safety committee, and there are sort of three purchases I'd like to make. I think we would try to make them all from the rental facilities account, the one where, you know, like when we rent the trailers or, you know, rent the parking lot out or anything like that that we do goes into there. If we couldn't, I think we have some in gifts and donations that we could use, so I think none of this would come out of like the general fund, I don't believe. But what we'd like to look at is purchasing stop the bleed kits. We did order one. It comes in like a big thing that you can mount on the wall, that's the one we ordered, but it almost looked too bulky and, and not secure enough necessarily to have those everywhere. I think we are going to keep the one we ordered, and we talked about as a safety committee trying to mount that maybe somewhere, sort of like outside the cafeteria in this building, because that's the most, you know, the auditorium, the gymnasium, the cafeteria even in this building, this is the most probably public use, so if we want to have one there, then it's easily accessible if it was needed after hours. In the other buildings, we talked about trying to have one of the kits on each floor, but we weren't going to mount them, we were probably going to keep them in certain areas like the teacher work rooms or things like that, so that like staff knew they were there and could get to them. But, you know, at the elementary school, we don't expect kindergartners to be grabbing stop the bleed kits, you know what I mean? So, so as long as the staff knows where they are and we have them accessible on each floor, then that way, if, if need be, they can get them. So five kits, nine kits, sorry, it'd be about $500 a kit, because it's a little cheaper because when I get in the cases, it'd be about $4,500. And those are the kits, we did look at them at the safety committee, they come with like a tourniquet, they come with gauze, they come with like a clotting agent that you put in there, basically just to, to stop bleeding. Each one of these kits contains eight individual kits, so the one kit goes, and then there's eight smaller ones in there. I put in here, Clinton Middle School's standard window coverings, so basically for most of the windows at the middle school, they're kind of small, narrow, long rectangles in the doors, and I think they're included in, there's sort of a picture of them, that these, these are things that Velcro over and you can just pull them down and they, and they fall down. So we'd like to move forward with that and be able to get, you know, that should be a pretty easily and cost-effective way, I think, to cover the bulk of the windows in there, and then we'll kind of come back around and assess where we're missing and try to go through from there, because they'll make any size, it's just a matter of, you know, what's the cost going to be and that kind of stuff. But for less than $1,000, we can get pretty much almost every classroom covered in there, so we'd like to make that order. The only, the final thing I'm going to do, Chief Lutz was unable to make our last safety committee meeting, these do claim to be fire retardant to NFPA 701-1 standards. I just want to, before I make the order, I want to confer with Chief Lutz just to make sure that it's, that's something he's comfortable with us putting on the doors and leaving there. And then classroom lockdown kits, so we went over what was in this kit, and we got a quote of them for 165. We figured 165 is roughly, when we counted in each building, the number of sort of large gathering, like full-size type classrooms that we have in the district. We have more teachers than that, but we have more Clinton Teachers Association members than that, but not necessarily that many full-size classes, right? So we got a quote for 165. It's about, I think it ends up being about $80 a kit with a discount. Did I put that one in here? I might not have given you that. Oh, yeah, there it is. $73, $74 was the one when you buy in bulk, but then that's because it's big, you got to pay for the shipping. And so what'd be good about these is they are, they're like five-gallon buckets, they have a little toilet seat on them, they have all the stuff you need for, for toileting, like the bags and the wipes and the, that kind of stuff. They even come, this kit comes with, there are varying levels of kits, this is a pretty comprehensive one. It even comes with things like a tarp and a small thing of duct tape. The idea is you can use that tarp in the corner of your classroom to basically create privacy, so people did have to use the restrooms, they could do so there. This kit also comes with water, 30 like pouches of water, and a couple, I think it's like five, like food bars that are in like the break into like six sections, so 30 kids could each get, it's like 400 calories or something like that. So the, the only part is the kit, the food and water have a five-year shelf life, so at some point, we'd have to replace that, but the other things should be pretty, you know, the, the buckets and the seats aren't going to go bad, those are going to be like a one-time investment, so we would just have to come up with a plan as far as what's our replenishing plan for that. So overall, I'm basically asking if the board is okay with us spending approximately $20,000 on these safety committee purchases.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second a second.
Any questions, discussion? Any, no, in my favor?
All right, thank you. We'll try to get some of these ordered as soon as we can. And the, on one other note, the AEDs that we had talked about and approved earlier are scheduled for delivery tomorrow. I believe they're supposed to come in and start putting the new AEDs in. And then the last thing I had on here was just a athletic recognition, and I just wanted to put that in here because I know that we, I think one other one was, I think, when we were talking about the boys' ice hockey state champs, we, we couldn't remember one of the names of the two, so I wanted to make sure since they were in here. This is basically this, an excerpt from the newsletter that went out, that Smitty put together, sorry, that Flight Director Smith put together. The cheerleaders were in Florida competing this weekend. They did get a, their highest score of the season with a 96.4, so they claimed the title of grand champions at the Emerald National Cheers Competition in Pensacola, Florida. Congratulations to the cheerleaders.
Can you break down that number for us, like how it all happened? You know, how they got scored?
You want to know what the 96.4 means? We had a sack fly in the first, and then they had a touchdown. No, I don't know.
Stuck the landing.
But they are, yeah, but they are, they should be flying back, probably as we speak, but I don't think they'll actually land until, I think they land in Boston around 10 or so, and then the Knights Museum brings them back here, I think they're supposed to arrive here around midnight. Emily Johns selected as a super team member for girls' ice hockey, this is her third straight year. She led Central Mass with 32 goals and seven assists. For the co-op boys' ice hockey, they did get to invite, they were the state champs with Nishova, they were invited to visit the State House on the 26th. Tierney and Ford and CJ Warner were members of the team from Clinton, they got to attend. And Owen Brydell was chosen as the recipient of the MBCA All Academic Team, there were 16 in the state, and he was selected as well.
Steve, I have a question, the, we have the banners in the gym for our state champs. Is there any appetite or any, to put the hockey one up where we had kids on the team? And I don't want to put Nishova in the Clinton gym, so I'm not sure.
No, I'm just kidding, I don't know how to do it.
I think they have a banner for that, because Emily Johns is on a banner, so I think they could probably do something similar. There's like an, an individual banner that is for like state championships, for some kind of co-op, and I think they could probably just add those two names.
Yeah, treat it more like an individual as part of that. I can, I can try to see what we've been doing, but yeah, because you're right, you don't want to put a giant like, you know, Nishova co-op, Hudson co-op, whatever, every, every, you know, but, but recognizing it's a couple of kids, if we can have a name that they're members, yeah.
All right, thanks, man.
Yeah, there's one up.
And I think that's all I have.
All right. Anything from curriculum?
Not at this time.
We covered safety, marketing.
Nothing new.
Policies.
They've been pretty quiet here.
Facilities, I think we covered that. We're good on negotiations. And then the old business. And then new business.
I'll just say something right now, so I can say it. There was a little controversy, not controversy, confusion maybe, over when officially Teacher Appreciation Day and Week is. It's worded as the first, Teacher Appreciation Day simply the first Tuesday, and Teacher Appreciation Day is the first week of the first full week in May. So because May 1st was a Monday, technically Teacher Appreciation Week is next week, but I know, I think at the elementary school, we're doing some things this week, I think the middle school's doing some next week, so there's a little bit of, but it's just, we appreciate them so much, we're celebrating it twice, that's how it goes, so. So I'll send something out to the staff tomorrow just so that they know, because I don't want anyone thinking that we forgot it. We did get a little gift for the teachers that we've been doing the last few years, and I'll probably try to distribute those on Monday, because Monday's a PD day anyway, so it might work out, just to do it that way. And then the, just when we think of it, too, we did order some erasers, we have some erasers in, disc erasers with the logo on it that you can, so that way you don't have to worry about poking anyone's eyes out at Memorial Day.
Did we talk about Memorial Day already?
Mentioned it a little bit, that was it, but.
Memorial Day? Okay.
Yeah, Central Park, like 9:00 AM, right?
Ready?
I think so. I don't want to say it public because I might be off. Between 8:00 and 10:00.
We'll make sure we send an email to you.
Between 8:00 and 10:00. I don't know. Anything else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'm going to move my little cell.
All right. It's all unanimous. See you in a minute. Nobody wants to stay.
No gavel for you today?
Nope. Enough, I want.